I'm gonna start with you for announcements.
Okay, I think we started last time.
Oh, that's true. That's true. I'll start with Brandon. I've got the short chair again. What's going on here? No, no, I'm gonna blame Julie. Yeah, cuz then I gotta stand up and I gotta spin it like it's a pizza dough and it's just not, it's just not, there's no decorum for that. I'm not, I'm not there. Yes, the mics are live. It is 6:00 PM. I'd like to call this workshop of the Lewisville City Council to order on Monday, January 24th. We do have a quorum. First up on the workshop, we're gonna go ahead and work through any discussion of regular agenda items or consent agenda items. Counsel, I'm just gonna move through the numbers. If you have anything you'd like to have a question on or pull from consent, let me know. First up is public hearing number one. Public hearing number two.
Let me go green here. I have a couple of questions about this, just a couple of statements. Doesn't she, does she not have the authority already to close a park? I have a question about Central Park at night. There's a lot of nefarious activity happening out there, and it used to be locked at one time.
Right, so are you asking about Central Park or what?
Yeah, I was, I was just, when I said, when I was reading in here about closing certain recreational facilities.
Right, so it, prior to the edits, it just would-
Stacy, could you-
Alright. Prior to these edits, it would just say parks, and we wanted to make sure that everyone understood that I can close recreation, have authority at closed recreation facilities, pools, and not that broad width there, so yes, right now.
Expanding the scope of the definition.
To be more specific about what's in the park system, all in there, so, but yes, we do close Central Park in the evening.
You lock the gate?
We work with PD and our park ranger. Remember, it doesn't close till 11:00 though.
Eleven, okay.
It are.
Is that the only question, or did you have another?
No, yeah, that's the only question.
Thank you. Consent agenda, item three. Item four. Item five. Item six.
Excited about that one?
Yep, that's exciting. Item seven. Item eight. Regular hearing, item nine.
I'll have to recuse myself on that?
And I think that is all the items that we have, so we're gonna go back into the workshop. Item B, planned conversion of the Old Town Aquatics Pool located within Wayne Frady Park to a splash park, and we have a presentation from Parks Director Stacy Anaya.
So, Mayor, City Council, park fans, at some point, I'm gonna hand the call over to James Kunkie to help, help me with part of the presentation, but the first part's ours, and also have Hillary Bowen here. She is our Recreation Manager and aquatic expert, and heading up this, this project. So, I'm gonna take you through a little bit of a history of, of what the Old Town Aquatic Park has, has, has been throughout time here. So, the original park opened in 1980, the pool did. It was a L-shaped pool, and it had a one and three-meter diving board. You don't see a lot of diving boards in pools anymore, they just don't, don't do that, but, so it was, that was its original shape. It was a regular, what you would think of as a municipal pool. And then, as time went on, in 2002, we started considering having a 4B sales tax to help improve and operate, fund operations of parks and recreation facilities, and that passed in 2002, and part of what sold, sold that was that there would be renovation of their outdoor pools, which was the focus of the College Street Pool and also what would become Sun Valley Aquatic Center. So, the final season for that original pool at Wayne Frady Park was the summer of 2004, and then we went in and, and redid it, and the operations of the water park, as you know, today, started in 2005, and in that park, there's some splash, splash pad elements, a zero-depth entry pool, a water slide, and a lazy river, plus shade structures and a bathhouse. So then, the final season for that water park came in 2019. And the hours of operation at that, at that facility were Monday through Friday, 10:00, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, where we closed on Thursdays for maintenance. Saturday and Sunday, Sunday had a little bit more limited hours, and that season typically ran through the end of school to the beginning of school, cuz we really, really focused on, on daycare reservations and party, party umbrella rentals out there, some open swim, and then after hours with corporate pool rentals as well. The general admission was $3, resident admission, $2, same thing for Twilight, and we also ran our season passes there. This kinda tells you of what, about what our attendance has been at the outdoor pools. You'll see 2004, what they were prior to the renovations, then in 2005, there was obviously an uptick, especially at Sun Valley, and that typically happens when you open up a new facility. It's the new shiny thing, everybody wants to go to it, and then, you know, participation ebbs, it typically does. In 2007, you see a spike at Old Town Aquatic Park, and that was because originally, we had set it up where there would only be daycare reservations from 10:00 to 1:00 PM in the morning, and then it would be open for general swim. Well, in that 2007, 2008 timeframe, we combined them so that you would have general swim from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And so then you see kind of the ebb and flow of the popularity. In 2015, you can kinda also tell when we have floods. When it's flooding, you can't get to the lake. A lot of people are at Sun Valley, some come to Old Town, but we really just had, you know, some stagnation there, and this is just kind of what you see with outdoor facilities, is new parks open in nearby communities, new things to go look at, and then you can see what happened. When COVID hit, we only opened up Sun Valley Aquatic Center in 2020 and 2021, so there's nothing tagged there for Old Town. So, the next couple of slides, I'm gonna show you this one real quickly to tell you what our direct cost recovery rates are, and the next slide kinda shows you those same numbers, but the carved out what we spent on improving the facility, or, you know, doing big maintenance projects throughout there. So, you can kinda see, you know, what our costs were, well below $100,000 back in 2004, and then we redo the facility, and we've got, revenues are coming in pretty steady, ebbing and flowing, and, and expenses are kinda going up, and that just happens when you get people using a facility, you get wear and tear, you've gotta put some money into it. Back in 2008, Hillary and the team here had some great foresight. You'll see that that CIP cost, when they heard about the stories in Fort Worth and the other things in the, in, in the nation going on with the lack of UV systems to make sure that the water was always clean, they got out ahead of the Texas law and had them installed at both of the facilities, and so, you'll also notice that that was kind of a corresponding of when we had really good participation at each of the pools. That's because the city was getting great PR with everybody saying, hey, look, this is a system, you need to keep those facilities safe, and people started coming and visiting, so that's really neat. And then you can see along the time where maintenance costs weren't that much, and then you see, you know, 12 to 15 years later, we're starting to see what we need to put in to keep those facilities running. And along the way, we really have never gotten past a, you know, 25%, 26% direct cost recovery rate in terms of what, getting back what we put into it through revenue, and this is just direct costs. This is just what it takes for lifeguards, chemicals, direct facility maintenance. This isn't the overhead stuff of managing it and, and long-term, big stuff that, you know, sometimes facilities does there. Then you see the, if you wanted to see what the equivalent of what Sun Valley has, we put together the same thing. It has obviously a little bit better cost recovery rate, it has more amenities for people to enjoy. You can stay there a little bit longer to enjoy more things to do. Typically, our, our participation base comes back more often there. You'll can see that we started in the same timeframe, 2017, 2018, really having to put some money into it to make sure that we're keeping up with the pumps and our deck, and I think we've done some repairs into the, the slide shells there, but overall, you know, you've got, you're carrying a 40% recovery rate prior to that, and then we, we kinda lost a little ground in 2017 and 18 with some of those repairs. But then also in 2020 and 2021, we were just lucky to get them open with what was going on in the world at that time. So, looking at those things and thinking about how it came that we wanted to reimagine what Old Town Aquatic Park would, would be, is it really started back in 2018, when we started doing a cost recovery analysis that was sparked by what rates we needed to set for Thrive. What if, you know, we were hearing a dichotomy of, hey, we wanna make sure that Thrive is priced for everybody, but I really also need you to bring in this amount of revenue and hit like a 65%, 70% recovery rate at the facility, and I just couldn't see how you can rectify those two things with what our resident base is. So, we went through this cost recovery rate, because typically, you look at them specifically only as facilities, right, and only as specialty participants, use sports, aquatics, dance, all that kinda stuff. So, we said, let's, let's go through an exercise and really talk about what's important for us, and we set up this financial support and sustainability strategy, which kinda based what our cost recovery rates would be on types of services, and I know that's really, really itty-bitty, but it goes from non-monitored open access. So, those are our places, like our General Park, Central Park. You can walk in, we don't really have anybody there, it's not fenced, I mean, you can enjoy it at your own, own pleasure. We just make sure it's there. And then it goes all the way up through food, beverage, and merchandise sales, which means on those things, we should make money off of that, right? We should, taxpayers should not supplement the existence of your bag of Cheetos, which was Mayor Gilmore's famous analogy during the, the process of setting this. And if you look at this, typically what our aquatic facilities are, are they fall in this dropped-in monitored access, because we have to monitor access, it's state law, and up to rentals, because we do party umbrellas, where we wanna make sure that we're not supplementing someone's personal use of something. And we really base that on taxpayer money should go to whoever gets the biggest benefit and how many people can access the place. If all of us can access it without too much requirement, too much skill base, then more taxpayer dollars should go in and support that, but if it's gonna be an individualized use, then people need to pay more for that, and that's how we started looking at our fees and looking at those rates. And so that also made us look at what our facilities were bringing in and started generating, and remember, when we looked at that, we went from not only looking at what a direct cost is, but also what are the overhead costs, what are the administrative costs, what are the management costs, was it cost for Keith and his team to come in and support us, what debt are we carrying on these individual facilities? So, we roll all that into our analysis now. Of course, we adopted that in, in the late, in the summer of 2019, and then in 2020, COVID hit, so we really haven't been able to assess exactly how that's going, so we re-adopted this strategy, if you'll remember, back in November, I believe. So then in 2020, you know, March comes along, COVID hits, and we go into complete shutdown, which is a total bummer, cuz I was really, really excited about the summer, and we didn't get to open Old Town Aquatic Park, if you remember that, and we opened up Sun Valley Aquatic Park, but on a very limited basis, cuz we had problems recruiting lifeguard staff, training lifeguard staff, not only from the aspect of what COVID restrictions and social distancing guidelines would be, but this was a trend that was already industry-wide, hampering us. If you look at stuff in the Northwest, in the Midwest, back starting in 2017, they were having problems recruiting guards and opening pools in time. Austin has the same thing. They have 48 pools. They had to stagger their openings on them, cuz they couldn't find enough guards. So, we struggled with recruitment, and then in the budget process for 2021, we didn't really know what our, you know, financial future was, so Old Town Aquatic Park didn't get funded for operations for 2021, which means in that summer, we didn't get to, get to open, and that's when we began our discussions about possible conversions to a splash park, if you'll remember. What are we gonna do if we can't find lifeguards? How are we gonna operate with what might be constant social distancing restrictions? What are we gonna do? And then we compiled that in this winter storm, Yuri, in 2021, in February, that wonderful memory of ours, and we had significant damages at the pools, even though we had multiple systems in place to make sure that when freezes happen, the systems went down. We all know that those depend on electricity, right, and those pump rooms looked like a Chaluli art piece the day after, when we went in there. And those pump rooms looked like a Chaluli art piece the day after when we went in there. It was, you know, frozen water sticks everywhere. And we've got some pretty good pictures of that. But there were some significant damages there. And we started really thinking that this is when we need to move to Splash Park at Old Town, just because of the extent of the damages. And you'll remember in our part business plan, which we were the guinea pig last year, that was one of our, one of our tasks was moving towards that conversion. And I think we presented that in late February, early March. And so in 2021, even though we weren't going to open Old Town, we still faced struggles with lifeguard recruitment. It was the first season, we had the Thrive indoor aquatic facility there. We're going to have hours pretty much running all day. We had to, we, we came up with new recruitment tools. If you'll remember, we came and asked you at mid-year to raise our rates for lifeguards and cashiers and, and swim instructors. And then we also decided to absorb the training costs for lifeguards. It used to be that you had to arrive at our front door certified as a lifeguard or we wouldn't consider you. We'd offer lifeguard things that you could pay for and take, but now with, with recruitment the way it is, we've had to absorb that as a, as a hook, like, hey, we'll train you to, you know, because we're not just fighting against, for, for employees against other municipal park systems. We're, we're competing with McDonald's and Whataburger in the mall and GameStop too, right? And they don't have the challenges of when these kids are working as lifeguards with us, they cannot be on their phone, right? We, I mean, mine's over there and I'm having a panic attack because I can't see what's coming up right now. And I'm much older than a lifeguard should be. But, um, so we've got those, those things going on. And so if you'll remember, we didn't even get to open up Sun Valley at opening time. Typically, we say our target is on Memorial Day, we're having a big splash day and kicking off the season. We didn't get to open up until June 12th. And then we didn't even get to go into our extended season into September because we lost our guards. And we had to close that facility on August 15th, right? We had to wait. The facility was pretty much empty except for a few water aerobic classes until doggy dive-in happened in September. So we still face those challenges even coming out of the pandemic. We were only open, able to open Sun Valley about five times a week, and we didn't get to open up every one of the, of the features there because we just didn't have enough guards to do it. And just to give you an idea, at Old Town Aquatic Park, we need about 30 lifeguards for a season. We have two seasonal cashiers and two pool managers there. At Sun Valley, we run with 45 lifeguards, one pool manager, two assistant pool managers, and eight instruct, instructional swim program people. So water instructors, swim, swim team instructors. So that would, that's a, and then that's on top of the, you know, 30 we have at Thrive. So you're looking at a massive number that we have to hire. So it made even more sense to move that way. And so then in July, June and July, we worked with Kenson and Hunsicker to give us a feasibility study of what was it possible to convert the facility from what it is now to a splash pad? And it was yes. In fact, you're way ahead of the game because you've got voids there that we can run our pipes through and not have to dig out and to put, put our surge tank. So yes. And then in July, we came to you during our capital projects presentation and informed you that's the way that we were running. And then in the budget process, we had, we had action steps in there because we, remember, we start the, the budget process back in February. And we had one for the conversion and one for maintaining the current facility operation. And that one was dropped and we went full steam ahead with the conversion. And then in September, we hired Kim Lee Horn to work with us to redesign the facility and then take in some public comment, which we did in December at the Holiday Straw. We had a booth right over here. It was near where the pancakes were. That line got long. It was also sandwiched in between next to the pony rides. We had prime space. We talked to 143 individuals. All but two were excited about the, the conversion. We gave them two options. We had a whimsical theme and a nature theme, and everybody leaned towards the nature theme except for one whimsical element, which we have incorporated into the design. And no one wanted rocks as big as the ones at Doubletree Ranch Park. And we said, okay, so we'll make sure the rocks were a lot smaller, easier to sit on. And then, and later that, the next week, we went to the park board supportive of the facility renovation and what they saw as the design appreciated that we would be able to have extended facility hours and seasons at the splash park and the reduced pressure on staff for seasonal hiring. So when we got to it, the benefits of the splash park, the splash park's going to be free, right? We're not going to have to have cashier in attendance because we're going to take, since there's not a body of water and we don't have to guard it, you can walk into it without having to go through a gate. We're going to have expanded operational season, which mean we can run from May 1st through September 30th for the facility. And we'll have expanded operating hours. If you'll remember back to the hours of operation, we run 10 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and then limited hours on the weekend. Monday through Sunday, we'll be able to run 10 a.m. to, or yeah, 10 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And because we want to respect, this is in the middle of a neighborhood and make sure that, you know, you've got some limited stuff. It, especially when you read all the literature, the accessibility increase you get for a splash pad from the, from the part of someone that uses a wheelchair or a walker can make their way through the entire facility without using assistance. If you've got people who come from a culture that may not be able to wear a swimsuit and not have to face the ridicule for, you know, jumping in a pool fully clothed, it's easy to, to enjoy a splash park that way. Accessibility is just enhanced greatly. You're going to have increased connection with Wayne Frady. One of the things that we want to do is, and, you know, taking off that Doubletree Ranch example in Highland Village, you go to Doubletree Ranch and there's 10 things to do there, right? And it's seamless. You can run from the splash park over to the playground, to the football field, run around the trail. And we want to create that sort of connection at Wayne Frady. So what we'll be, we're planning to do is that little road that splits between the pavilion and the playground and the aquatic park area, we're going to close that down so that if you're there as a parent and your kid wants to play on the playground and wants to run quickly over to the splash pad, they can. If you've got teens playing basketball on the court to the side, you can easily watch and get to them. You can go out and enjoy a pickup game of football or soccer and really quickly get to the, to the trail out there. So I think overall connection is going to be enhanced. Obviously, it eliminates the needs for seasonal aquatic team members, and it reduces our operational and maintenance costs pretty mu, a lot. I'll still show you that in a second. And then it's more sustainable. We're going to be going from having an above-ground, essentially 65,000 gallon tank holding water that you use to evaporation, to an 8,000 gallon tank that will hold and recirculate the water in the splash pad. So we're not going to lose as much to evaporation because it's going to be held within an underground tank. But then you also have the capacity of, so yes, it'll be open from 10 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., but it's also going to have one of those stop things, so, or start, start things. So it's not going to be just running from 10 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. If you're there and you want it to run, you go push a button and it starts going. And then after a while, if there's no, no action going on, it'll stop. We get the use of the existing infrastructure. The pumps that run the pool are more than enough to run the splash pad. And then our return on investment, actually, it's probably going to come faster than seven and a half years. It's probably going to be more like five. When you take into account what the increases in our lifeguard salaries are and our training costs are, we'll probably recruit it a lot faster. So here's what the splash pad will look like. You'll kind of notice that it follows where the existing structures are. This shows no added shade structures, but if we wanted to add more, those come at a cost of probably about $16,500 installed, which wouldn't be too terrible. But what we'll be able to do is we'll be able to use all the piping that we need to create each one of these elements. We'll be able to use the voids that are in, in the areas that make up the facility right now. It's a really nice, appealing, nature-based theme. You see, we're going to be able to use some of the shaded areas to have some of the elements there. There's going to be some buckets going through areas for kids to run under those arches, cat tells, things coming up out of the ground that kids can stand on and be interactive. Here's one of the shaded areas. This is where I would be because obviously I burn in the sun. And then this is the element that wasn't included originally that made it from the whimsical thing. The cool thing is that, that spins, right? So you can see the kids get to interact with that area and the kid, and the parents can sit pretty close to where everybody's enjoying themselves. You'll notice there's no fence here, so we have immediate access to the, to the park. And it's just a really a lot of play space where kids can go interrupted, can go easily from one element to the next and enjoy it a little bit easier than you can in the, in the current facility because of where elements lie. So when you look at it, the differences of operating the splash park versus the current facility is our annual operating estimates, about $52,000 a year with about $5,000 a year set aside in CIP, our CIP repairs. And these are estimates we're getting from the designers. Yeah, it's going to cost us, which we already have budgeted, the $1,025,000, but 100,000 of that was, was spent in last year's budget using vacancy savings because we couldn't hire anybody. So then the current facility, right, based on what our new rates are, will cost us about $278,000 a year to operate. And we think based on what we knew in February of last year, it'll cost us anywhere between $100,000 to $160,000 to get the pool operating. Now, I will say, since we've been moving towards the splash park, we have been using Old Town to help us get Sun Valley ready. So elements we knew that we weren't going to use in the splash park, we've been moving over to Sun Valley so we wouldn't incur extra costs there. So for instance, some of the systems that we, and the pumps and gauges, that we won't need extra ones, we've been moving over. And on the left-hand side, you can kind of see a little bit, this is one of the older pieces of equipment at the current facility. Because it was built in 2005 and the industry didn't know any better, a lot of the stuff came with rubber elements. No one uses rubber elements anymore because they crack and break and they have to be, they're individually specialized for each site. Everybody's kind of going to a metal coated thing, which we'll be going to with the splash park. So a lot of the elements that we're do, that we're having to maintain right now are just so specialized and aren't made anymore. Our team has to work with the contractors and manufacturers to manufacture specifically for us just because of the age of it. So that's where some of those elevated annual repair estimates come. And obviously, a pool costs a little bit more than a splash pad. So that's where we're sitting at right now in terms of the design, the cost of both facilities. One of the things I want to do right now is hand it over to James and let him walk you through some online survey results.
Thank you, Stacy. So Mayor and Council, we did conduct an online input survey la, earlier this month, and found there are some very strong opinions in the community regarding Old Town Aquatic Park. I want to walk you through those, and I can summarize them very quickly by saying that the survey respondents who said they had regularly visited the park during 2019 are very emotionally attached to the park and either don't want it to change or want us to make it bigger. Whereas those residents responding to the survey who said they had not regularly visited the park in 2019 do not have that emotional attachment, and they are open to looking at changes for that facility. That is not a surprise. I could have told you that before we took the survey, but the survey backs me up on it. But I want to walk you through some of the context behind that as we look at these results. So just basics on the survey. We ran it the first couple of weeks of January. It was online only, and we've discussed that previously, the shortcomings and the opportunities of an online survey. Promoted it through social media, through our email newsletter, which goes out to more than 15,000 residents. And we had six total questions. The first three are what we call categorizing questions. That's categorizing the respondents that we can use for analysis later on. And the other three were open-ended questions to receive perceptions and impressions from the respondents. We got a total of 489 responses. You might remember, we had received just under 900 responses to our citywide resident satisfaction survey last fall. So 489 is a very strong response for a single topic short survey. Of those, about a fourth of them were from the 75057 zip code. That's very unusual for us to have a fourth of them from that zip code, but that's where the park is located, so you would expect to see a higher rate there. And about 69% were from the other side of Interstate 35. About 40% said they did not visit the park during 2019, whereas you see almost half said they visited either often or occasionally. So a little, there were more respondents who said they had visited than said they had not. Citywide, that would not be the case. We know that from the attendance numbers. But again, we have what's called a motivated respondent pool in this case. People who had an attachment to Old Town Aquatic Park were far more likely to be motivated to participate in the survey and encourage their friends to do so. So that's where you see a much higher rate of return among people who attended the park and lived near the park because they had that emotional attachment. Only about 7% of those who said they had visited the park said they visited without children. So that tells you 93% of the people who said, yes, I went to that park during 2019, they had young kids with them. Not surprising, you'll see the results later on back that up, but clearly attendance is primarily based on having those young children in the home. And then I mentioned the motivated respondent base. So let's look at some of the results. And this, this summarizes what I just told you, where the zip codes are, the visits during the year and visits with children. So we're going to bounce past that and talk about the three open-ended survey questions, questions four, five, and six in our survey. The first one asked, what's the most important target audience that should be served by this facility? And we gave some examples in order to help direct people to understand what we're asking. And you will see most of those examples were used by respondents. There were very few responses outside of those examples. But overwhelmingly, families, children, and families with young children were the top responses. More, about half, a little more than half of all responses gave one or more of those as the target audience. We also had some that said everyone and one some that said none. So we had a great range of users there. There was no discernible difference here when we broke it down by zip code and broke it down by whether or not they attended the park in 2019. No real distant difference in terms of these responses. So whomever responded to the survey, the chances were they were going to say families, children, families with young children were your target audience. And which, again, we saw 93% of people who said they had gone and said they went with young children. So that fits. Question number five asked the respondents to look at the current facility and ask what three words or phrases would you describe, use to describe the, the current facility? What feelings is it emote? What, what impressions do you get? What do you think about when you think of the current facility? And here, family-friendly, young children, fun and safe were at the top of the charts. And you'll see in a minute a word cloud that really brings this into, into focus. But family-friendly, young children, right there at the top again. However, outdated, small, and old were also near the top. So you have a mix of positive and negative when you look at the overall 489 responses. The people who visited regularly were more likely to use positive words, fun, excellent, perfect sized, whereas those who had not visited were more likely to say old, outdated, dirty, empty. Again, expresses the fact that we had this motivated respondent base, not a surprise there. And then question number six asked survey respondents to look to the future, said that the city is looking at potentially converting this from an aquatic park to a splash park. And if that happens, what would you like that to represent? What words or phrases would you like to be characterized in that change? Here's where quite a few people, it's open-ended, they can write whatever they want. We had some very creative, maybe not necessarily germane responses here, a few that I can't repeat in public. We had some very creative, maybe not necessarily germane responses here, a few that I can't repeat in public. But nevertheless, we got some very good feedback here as well. And here's where you saw the biggest difference between those who had been to the park and those who had not. We'll get to that in a couple of slides. Uh, overall, pool and fun were the top two responses. And then followed after that was safe, shade, and clean. So in general, that's what the people were saying they wanted to see in the new facility. But when you broke it down into regular visitors versus non-visitors, regular visitors were much more likely to select words that described what's currently there. For example, um, lazy river and slide were mentioned multiple times by those two groups. They were not mentioned by a single person in the first two groups, the ones who had not been to the park. So if they'd been to the park, they're much more likely to describe something already in place. Uh, and in many cases, wanting that to be bigger. As opposed to those who had not been there, who were most likely to emphasize safety, shade, seating, and appearance. So cleanliness, color, art, and again, art is a great example. There was about a dozen people in the first two, the ones who had not visited, who mentioned art should be incorporated. There was nobody in the people who had been there who mentioned art. So you see the big difference there. One's talking about facilities and what we enjoy now, and one is saying, let's think about what else it could be because I don't go there today. All right? So here's the word cloud. The big one is when you look at all results. And I'm glad we started with this one because you'll see there's not a whole lot of difference when you break it down based on question number two. And question two is when we asked people how often they had attended. When you see on the left is they didn't visit at all in two thousand and nineteen, all the way to the right where they said they visited often, children and families, top two across the board. Same thing that we saw earlier, so it's the same thing in the big picture up top. Where you start seeing differences is the ones who visited often were more likely to say that nearby residents are your primary audience. The ones who hadn't visited were more likely to say citywide residents should be your primary audience. So they had a different image of what that park should be. Then question number five, again, asking what impressions they have of the current facility. And you'll see this one's much more varied. Um, if you look at the overall results, there's friendly, I promise you, family-friendly, young children, right up top, uh, but then also small, outdated, there's fun, there's safe. Then you break it down into the, below it, you break it down according to how often they had visited, and you'll again see the ones on the left were much more likely to say old, outdated, and to recommend change. Whereas opposed to the ones on the right who talked about it was fun, safe, and less crowded. Less crowded was a very popular choice in that fourth category. So that shows you the scale I mentioned to you. The ones who had not been there were looking for change. The ones who had been there were looking for status quo or more of the status quo. And then finally, the one that has the biggest difference, and this is the fourth question. This is when we said, what should the new facility represent? And of course, obviously, the word that jumps out from everyone results is the word pool. Um, but remember, more than half or just right at half of respondents had visited the pool either occasionally or often, more than who had not. And if you look here, the two boxes on the bottom right, both of them, pool is big. So you see those, you know, pool's going to be the biggest one overall because that's the majority of your respondents and that's the word they picked most often. You look on the left-hand side, those are the ones who did not visit. So either they are not an audience for us or they're an audience that we're not currently reaching. And they looked at safety as the most important thing, followed by fun and shade. So a lot of distinction here. Um, no single clear direction, I know the word pool being really big makes it clear. It's clear from the right side. It's clear from those who've been there and those who go there regularly, that's what they're looking for. On the left side, that's how you're looking at it, it's left side. On the left side, it is obviously different. It's looking more at activities and safety and aesthetics. So are there any questions about these survey results?
Thank you.
Okay.
Good presentation. James has a great way of interpreting that stuff. I really appreciate his input. So we went to put together a, a little slide for you, kind of showing what the pros and cons of looking at each facility, uh, would be. And so for the, the splash park, you know, we've got, the, the pros going for it is it's going to be free to participants, right? We don't have to worry about money collection. You don't have to, the barrier to participating isn't going to be you paying an entry fee, right? Uh, we're going to have increased season and hours of operations, so we have increased, um, access, enhanced accessibility and connection to, to Wayne Frady Park in general. Uh, we're going to eliminate the need for lifeguards there, which will not only take a burden off the team who's preparing for the summer, but HR and everybody will have reduced operational and maintenance expenses. Looking at that sustainability piece in terms of water use. Um, the good thing is, is that one cool thing is the public restrooms will now be open to the entire park. So some, you know, when you're out there at the playground or out there at, at the, um, at the basketball court, you couldn't use the restrooms until you, unless you paid to go in. Um, we're going to be able to continue the utilization of that UV sanitation system in, in addition to the chlorination system. And if we wanted to, we have an opportunity to add additional shade during design or those things are easily installed in next fiscal year's, um, budget. The cons on that, it's not a swimming pool. Um, there's going to probably be a delayed opening for the two thousand and twenty-two season anyway. It's probably going to take us most of the summer to get the construction done. And there is capital outlay for the conversion, but that capital outlay is budgeted. For the facility as is, you have reduced capital outlay in two thousand and twenty-two. It remains a hybrid pool. Um, same stuff with the UV sanitation. The downside is you have that increased annual operating cost and those things will continue to escalate. Uh, entry fees will continue and we'll need to, from a cost recovery standpoint, have a discussion about what those cost recovery fees should be. Uh, we'll have lost funds in the design of the splash pad because we're already down that road. Um, and, uh, I really, this is the biggest one, is there's the uncertainty of whether we can operate the facility if we can't hire guards to be there. So, um, those are the pros and cons. So our next steps will be, uh, you know, tonight, determining what our path forward, we're going to be, uh, finalizing our construction and repair documents, be- begin construction and repair. If we go to repair, um, we're aiming, we think we can get there by the end of July. Uh, we have not been heading towards a pool opening. We will completely have to change gears to get there. And, uh, you know, we're already kind of in a queue for, uh, splash park purchases. We're not in a queue for our pool repair, um, stuff that we're going to need from a contractor. So we'll have to, it's going to take us a little bit to make that. If we do the splash park on time, we'll be there, ready to go in August, running through the end of September. And that's where we are right now, so.
So, yeah, so Mayor and Council, um, you know, our plan right now is to move forward with the splash park. Um, but, uh, if we hear direction otherwise today, um, I think, uh, we're ready to pivot if necessary. I, I will say, um, we're kind of at a juncture where we need to make that decision. Um, if we, obviously, Council can say they need more information and to bring back more information, but just to let, let you realize, um, with that timeframe that Stacy has on, on the screen right now, um, if we pivot today for repairs, we can, we think we can hit July. Um, if we wait any longer, which is totally fine, we just will probably not open this summer. Um, so just, just letting you guys know that.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to say that growing up here, Sun Valley wasn't quite finished when I moved here. And we came to Old Town. This is not the original pool. That was torn up a long time ago. There's nothing historic about it. But I live on the east side now and, um, I have grandbabies. Uh, and I go to Old Town Aquatic Park, well, I did before it closed down, all the way up to two nine, you know, two thousand and nineteen. But even in two thousand and nineteen, Ellie, my granddaughter, who just turned ten, wasn't wanting to go there anymore. So it's for a brief moment in time, and I know it's sentimental to some, but I am, was a big proponent of this splash park. It's not a pad. Okay, you can have a splash pad in your backyard. This is a full-blown park. Um, and sometimes the right and physically, um, responsible thing to do is not always the most popular thing to do. Um, but we've, we've talked about this and, and have voted on this and, and budget and stuff. And, um, it's been out there for discussion. I remember talking about this when I was campaigning in two thousand and eighteen. Because of Highland Villages, I mean, we would go to Highland Village and Southlake had, has an amazing one. I would like to see a slide in it, you know, if there's some way to incorporate a slide, but, but that's my take on it. Um, if everything remains as it is, nothing's improved, nothing grows. It becomes stagnant and it dies. Uh, there's no reason why the east side can't have a major improvement like this. You talk about families, go to any of those other splash parks, not pads, and they are full of all age groups, all abilities, uh, single adults just wanting to get a little splash and sun. Um, just talk about bringing those families to Old Town. We're a couple of blocks from the center in art with restaurants and, and our art and all that stuff like that. I think this is a wonderful thing and, and I understand there's going to be some people and probably some people that are related to me and grew up with me. But I'm looking at dollars and cents and I'm looking at it from a perspective as every summer until COVID. From two thousand and eleven, I was at that pool at least three days a week. And there was maybe three kids at any given time that might be over the age of eight. And all the rest of them were very young families with babies and were all sitting on the edge. Um, but, and, and it is, it is quiet and there isn't very many people, but that doesn't fare well when you're talking about income versus outflow. That's just my two cents. Thank you very much, I'd like to say, for your presentation and stuff. James did a great job.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Mayor, I have some, I have some thoughts as well. I, um, I appreciate the presentation. Um, there's absolutely no, uh, debating that on paper, this looks like the absolute right way to go to, that we, we have to do something, um, because the, the current facility, that we can only stretch a dollar so many ways. I do understand that. Um, also know, when I moved to Old Town five years ago, um, I didn't know the Old Town Aquatic Park was there. And when we figured out that it was there, um, it was, oh, I'm, and my child was, he, I want to say he was, oh, he's three at the time. So, um, but every summer up until two thousand and nineteen, um, that was his favorite thing to do. And, um, it was, uh, I read through the survey results, a lot of what people are saying about, you know, you run into people from the neighborhood there. Um, there, there really is a sense of community that people feel when they go there. And I think that that's what, what the attachment is to it. Um, and so I, I think for me, I'm feeling very conflicted about it because like I said, on paper, this, you know, it seems like the absolute right thing to do to convert, um, away from the pool to a splash park. Um, but it, it does give me pause with the, the number of people who actually use the facility are saying, no, we want the pool, we like what, what is there, there's good stuff there. Um, could it be updated and, and some changes made? Absolutely. Um, I, I think for me, I, I, I wonder if there's more than just the two options that we're being presented with as things that we understand that the, um, the return on investment or the, uh, the cost recovery is much lower for the Old Town Aquatic Park than it is for Sun Valley. Um, although, I mean, it, it looks like it can be kind of close, maybe on the lower end of our range that, you know, that we have the goal. Um, but it looks like it's close. Are there things that we can do to get it more in line? Um, for example, um, maybe having, uh, more limited hours where the pool elements are, are open, uh, so that we don't have to hire as many lifeguards? Um, or maybe just a certain number of days a week that it's open. Um, I, I, I'm not sure how many other options staff has evaluated. Um, but I, just given the passionate responses we receive from the number of people who actually use this facility, um, I, I have to consider those, um, with a heavy weight because I, I don't want to take away an amenity or a benefit in this neighborhood because somebody on the other side of town says that, um, it's old and, and they don't like it. Um, so I would be, um, I would love to see if there's maybe some different options we could, we could look at, possibly doing a hybrid. Um, are there elements we can keep? Um, and then some elements that we can, new elements that we can incorporate that would, uh, reduce the amount of water that we're using, uh, reduce our overhead expenses of staffing and all the things. Um, can we, can we look at that before we jump all in and decide that we're going to just completely remove the pools in their entirety?
We've looked at, at a whole wide range of things and we can do some deeper dives and get you some information. The one thing that I'll say is that, that, uh, the lifeguard cost may be, you know, expanded, retracted, depending on hours. But the baseline dollars for keeping the pool open, water, electricity, uh, maintenance will remain the same. So you're just going to see that, you know, accordion effect with your staffing levels.
Could we, could we possibly raise the admission price to help offset some of that?
Well, the interesting thing would be is what are, what's that tolerance? Because it is a much smaller facility. We do have a different structure at Sun Valley. Uh, but obviously, that comes with, with some different amenities. We can certainly run those, those numbers for you. I just, there's not going to be a lot of, you know, accordion to it to keep it as is because a lot of that sits in the maintenance, water, electricity cost.
Right. So was there, yeah, so is there a way that we could kind of scale back the elements that are there? Like maybe some sort of hybrid between doing the pools and this, and the splash park and, and combining those elements together? Is there a way to do that?
So if we have any standing water, it will be a pool, so we'll have to guard it.
Right. But if we have a smaller pool, do we have to have less lifeguards?
It will just depend on what the design of the pool is. Uh, for instance, we asked, the, the slide, we thought about keeping the slide as is, but we have to guard that because there's water at the bottom of it. So, and we have one at the top and one at the bottom. Right? So those, those things come into, to, if, if we were going to look at something new, I mean, there'd be a whole bunch of scenarios we'll need to look at. I don't want, I don't want a what-if it here to give you options. I'll have to look at, look at those, we certainly can.
Well, that, yeah, that's, and that's a great example of my, my, my question or my point is that, you know, if we looked at keeping a slide or two or maybe putting in a new slide or two, um, would that, so that would require a couple of lifeguards versus, you know.
To remove the pool element.
Right. So is there, I guess, I guess what I'm asking is there some sort of compromise somewhere in the middle where we could get, um, a little bit of, of both and we could move towards something that's more new and innovative and more sustainable, but, you know, keep some of the elements that, um, you know, the people who've been using this facility for years and years, um, really enjoy at a lower cost.
Some scenarios. I do need to let you know, we have been, there's going to be a price escalation in material costs, splash pad or pool. Um, regardless of the elements, and that's. Regardless of the elements and that's coming in the second quarter. So our last, we're in that kind of window where we need to make a decision. Or the cost I'm showing you right now for the splash park conversion are going to escalate. So we can get, we can get something to you. We just, uh, we're, we're fighting that battle as well.
Right. And, and I completely respect and understand that as well. I just want to make sure that, that we make the decision that we feel like is right for the neighborhood and the city as a whole. There has to be, um, I think that there's a compromise somewhere in there and I, you know, if we have to pay a little bit more because of a price escalation to take our time to find that solution, I personally would, would be okay with that.
Counsel, we've got about three minutes until we need to go into the regular session. And staff is asking for direction on this one. Just, uh, will you guys be comfortable if we go through, do our council meeting and then bring this back for additional discussion? I still need to hear from a couple of other folks. So, okay. So we're going to put a pause, the thumb tack on this. And we're going to adjourn from the work session and we will come back to regular session in three minutes. All right. It is seven o'clock and I'm going to call this regular session of the Lewisville City Council to order Monday, January 24th. I did mention the workshop session was adjourned. It was not. It was just going to be paused. We will pick that back up at the end. And of course, the public is more than welcome to continue with that conversation at the end of the general session. With that, I would like to invite Mayor Protam Green for the invocation.
Please join me for a moment of quiet contemplation. Amen.
Councilmember Troyer, if you would lead us in the pledges.
Please join me in the pledges to the U.S. and Texas flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right. Item one, public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for two residential accessory buildings, including an accessory dwelling unit with an aggregate total square footage to exceed 500 square feet on approximately 2.4452 acres legally described as Lot 7 Block A. Britton Estates Edition located at 1873 Sinclair Court and Zone Single Family Residential District R-18, as requested by Bill Peck, William Peck and Associates Incorporated on behalf of Terry and Charlene Britton. The, and if I got that wrong, my apologies, but they are the property owners. And this is case number 21-12-13-SUP. The property owners wish to build a large pool house of 1,300 air feet, air conditioned square feet and a thousand square foot covered porch. The property also contains an existing detached garage, which is considered an accessory building. Accessory dwelling units and accessory buildings with an aggregate square footage over 800 square feet require approval of a special use permit. The proposed structure is proportional and will be complementary to the main home. Planning and zoning commission recommended unanimous approval five to nothing on January 4th, 2022, and it is recommended that the city council approve this ordinance as set forth in the caption. I do have, looks like one of the owners, Terry Britton, here available. Thank you, sir. Really, and if I, my apologies if I'm getting the name with the emphasis on the wrong syllable. But he is here to answer questions, but of course he's here in favor of this. So counsel, if there is no discussion, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. Counsel, if you would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. I will now entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption. I have a motion from Councilmember Cade.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Green. City Secretary.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for two residential accessory buildings, including an accessory dwelling unit with an aggregate total square footage to exceed 500 square feet on approximately 2.4452 acres. Legally described as Lot 7 Block A, Britton Estates Edition located at 1873 Sinclair Court and Zone Single Family Residential R-18 District, providing for a repealer, severability, penalty, and an effective date and declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Thank you, sir. Appreciate the attention to detail on the packet. It looks great. Item number two, public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending Chapter 10 Parks and Recreation of the Lewisville City Code by repealing and replacing the chapter in its entirety, amending definitions and enforcement provisions, amending hours of operation for certain park uses, amending certain rules for city parks, amending certain enumerated offenses, clarifying the authority of the Parks Director to close certain recreational facilities, adoption of standards of care for youth recreational programs, and making other minor amendments necessary for clarity, providing for a repealer, severability, a penalty, and an effective date and declaring an emergency. Chapter 10 of the City Code of Ordinances defines guidelines and duties for the Parks Board, lists curfew times, defines prohibited acts within the park system, lists rules for staying at the RV campground at Lake Park, and creates local standards of care for youth programming among, among other items. The proposed changes for Chapter 10 include modifications related to previously approved fees established during the fiscal year 2022 budget process, prohibiting commercial activity without agreement or permit by the city at Lake Park, recently approved by the USACE, as well as minor edits to address typos in previous updates. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. And we do have our Parks Director, Ms. Stacy Anaya, available for questions. Counsel? City Secretary, do we have any requests for comment on this?
No, sir, we do not.
If there is no discussion, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
As set forth in caption.
I have a motion and a second. City Secretary.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending Chapter 10 Parks and Recreation of the Lewisville City Code by repealing and replacing the chapter in its entirety, amending definitions and enforcement provisions, amending hours of operation for certain park uses, amending certain rules for city parks, amending certain enumerated offenses, clarifying the authority of the Parks Director to close certain recreational facilities, adopting standards of care for youth recreational programs, and making other minor amendments necessary for clarity, providing for a repealer, severability, a penalty, and an effective date and declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. All right. Item D, visitors' citizens forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping a feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. City Secretary, do we have any requests for citizen forum?
No, sir, we do not.
Item E, consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so request. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Councilmember Cade has asked that item four be pulled from the consent agenda. Counsel, do we have any other items to be pulled or discussed? All right. I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda minus item four.
Move to approve the consent agenda without item four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Consent agenda passes five to nothing. All right. We're going to jump into item four. Thank you, Councilmember Cade. Item four is approval of a reimbursement agreement by and between the city of Lewisville and the Denton County Transportation Authority to reimburse the city for design costs related to the Southwest Parkway Streetscaping Project and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement. The Denton County Transportation Authority, DCTA, Transportation Reinvestment Program, TRIP, is a grant program that funds qualifying mobility projects in the DCTA member cities on a reimbursable basis. No city match is required. In the 2020-2021 call for projects, the city of Lewisville submitted the design of the Southwest Parkway Streetscape project for DCTA's consideration and was awarded $425,373. This reimbursement agreement formalizes the administration of the grant. It is recommended that the city council approve the reimbursement agreement as set forth in the caption above and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Counsel, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes four to nothing. I'll be glad to hear that Lewisville has 3.6 million of dollars coming in this coming year's TRIP project plan. Just heard that today. Item nine. Consideration of a resolution supporting the Denton County Commissioners Court request for an investigation of the operations of the Denton Central Appraisal District under the direction of Hope McClure, as requested by Mayor TJ Gilmore. On January 12th, 2022, the Denton County Commissioners Court sent a letter to the Chairman of the Denton Central Appraisal District, DCAD, outlining a series of occurrences in the past two years, which, in their opinion, exhibited a lack of transparency and mismanagement on the part of DCAD. The Denton County Commissioners Court is requesting an investigation of the operations of DCAD under the direction of Hope McClure and a determination of the steps being taken to address the issues outlined in the letter. The city of Lewisville has experienced similar issues, shares many of the same concerns expressed by the Denton County Commissioners Court, and is committed to transparency. It's recommended that the city council consider the resolution as set forth in the caption above. Available for questions is, of course, Claire Powell, our city manager. I would like to take a moment just to make a couple of brief comments on this. And the reason why I'm asking for it is that we have several other municipalities in Southern Denton County, including the city of Carrollton, Highland Village, and Flower Mound, all looking to add letters of support to the county commissioners court. If it were just us, I, I think we would kind of be deflected due to kind of the history that we've had over the last couple of years with the DCAD. But I do believe that a strong voice from multiple cities will send a strong message that our residents are frustrated with the difficulties that they've had with their appraisals over the last two years and that we would need to see some additional concrete actions being taken by that board. So that's why I'm asking for this letter of support to the county. Other comments? Questions?
It's time.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve the
Second.
Resolution as set forth in the caption.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Thank you, counsel. All right. Next up, we have reports. And I am going to start the reports this week with Councilmember Jones, if you don't mind, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I just want to kind of take a, a kind of look back at last, at last Monday. We had a MLK Day of Service. I want to thank Mayor Gilmore and Councilwoman Cade for coming out. We also had staff members who came out and helped as well. Yeah. Oh, yeah. I forgot. William, William was there too. He was on the other side of the fence, so I didn't get to see him as much. But it, it was a great project for our Macedon, Champion Macedonia Cemetery, which is an African-American cemetery that needed, needed a lot of love and still needs some love. In fact, we'll be going up there to finish up. I want to thank Councilmember Cade for getting the firefighters to come out there and help mulch after.
Actually, it was the police. The firefighters helped, helped us like locate one and then it was Officer Dickens and Officer Roberts. So we had both departments helping.
It was a team effort.
They suffered greatly. They got poison ivy all over them.
Well, we hate to hear, we hate to hear about the injuries, but we do thank you for, for, for the assistance. It was, it was a great project. We had over 200 volunteers. We filled up two dumpsters worth of debris and trees. That i- it's great. If you're over there by where the old studio will be grilled, you'll see there, we'll be going back periodically to kind of help keep it up. There's one person there. And that's, I forget, uh, Commissioner Bobby Mitchell was instrumental in getting that done. Jackie Shaw from Westside Baptist Church. And our own Judge Andy E was out there, uh, helping as well. So it was just a great time. It was a great community effort. And I'd love to see us doing more projects like that in the future. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Cade?
Yeah, Mayor Wilcox was out there as well. It was, it was a wonderful day. It started out cold. I'm just piggybacking, okay?
And Mayor Wilcox was key to us getting those dumpsters.
Yes, she was. And we were hoping to get a couple of more because we still had two or three dumpsters left to fill. I mean, of stuff that would go into. But it was, it's night and day. So if you have a chance to go by there, it literally is nothing like it was before. You can actually see it. Which is good from a public safety standpoint, too. But, um, other than that, I don't have any, any other reports. I'm just, was very excited to see the turnout.
Councilmember Meredith?
Yes, I have some library activities for the week. And all the rest, Book Club, Tuesday, January 25th, 6:30 to 7:30. No registration required at the Crawford Meeting Room. Job Fair hosted by Workforce Solutions for North Central Texas, Wednesday, January 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. No registration required at the community room.
Councilmember Troyer?
First of all, I'd like to say, we had the
First of all, I'd like to say we had the Grand. I have some things on the Grand Theater. There was a comedy, stand-up comedy show, two stand-up comedy shows last Saturday night? Saturday night it was. They were, the show was good. It was also sold out, for the most part, almost completely sold out for both shows. So congratulations to the Grand for putting that on. Upcoming things, the Black Box Songwriter Series featuring Patricia Vaughn, presented by the city of Lewisville, will take place on February 5th. The Texas Tune Series, Hot Club of Cowtown, again presented by the city of Lewisville, will be on February 12th. And as always, every Friday night, the Acoustic Jam takes place, put on by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, 6 to 9 in the theater. There are several art exhibitions going on. One is New Beginnings, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville. That's going on from January, will be January 8th to February 5th. And the LISD High School Exhibition, presented by the Lewisville Independent School District, February 11th through the 26th. A World Divided, Tomorrow United, the MLK Student Art Show, which is, by the way, there are some tremendous pieces put on by the students of the LISD. This is presented by the Committee to Commemorate MLK Junior Day, and that will be going on from January 22nd through February 19th. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. City Secretary? Mr. Lukey?
Nothing, Mayor.
I have the distinct pleasure of seeing a new face over here. And this is Ms. Samples, our new Director of Economic Development?
Yes.
I'm just going to ask you one question. Do you know what the lake level is today?
Maybe a little early for that question, but I'll work on it.
Well, we're really, really excited to have you here, and thank you so much.
And I'm excited to be here.
Any comments or anything you'd like to make?
Well, I do not have a report. However, I'll take the opportunity to introduce myself. So, as you know, I'm Marichal Samples, and the new Economic Development Director. And I'm coming from the city of Dallas. I spent 10 years there in the city attorney's office, and the last eight years I focused on economic development incentives and negotiating those types of deals. So I am happy to be here now and to be part of the team leading development in the city of Lewisville. And I know that there are certain things that are important to the council. There are certain projects, like the Lake Project, the Northern Gateway, Old Town, and those projects will definitely be at the top of my priority list and any other projects that you all find important. So it's nice to be here, and I'm looking forward to meeting you all.
Welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Sample?
No report, Mayor.
Yeah, but you get time at the workshops, so. Park Fan?
Park Fan.
We good?
We're good.
Sir?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor and council, just want to give you a brief update that I'm going to be out of the office for a few weeks, starting at the end of this week. And so Kelly Rouse, who's here with us, will be representing the Public Services Department at the next few meetings. And one of the things that he's been thoroughly trained on and well-qualified for is lake level reporting, so you won't go without it. But today it is 520.03, so two feet below the base, or the normal pool level.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, council, I just wanted to make mention that neighborhood grant staff will be at the library coming up January the 27th at 6:30 p.m. to teach residents about different grants for your home and for your neighborhood. So a lot of popular programs that they'll be discussing, so I encourage residents to check it out.
Couple of great programs that they're going to be going over, so make sure you get over there if you're looking at some of our PEP grant programs, our neighborhood grant programs. It's good stuff. So, thank you, sir. Chief?
No report, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ferris? City manager?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm just going to leave it with one thing, and unfortunately, it's a conflict, so you're going to have to pick. Who'd I miss? Where'd I miss?
Kristen.
I did. I missed Kristen.
She's like a stepchild down there.
I completely missed Kristen. It's my fault.
This is not the first time you've forgotten.
I know, I know.
Now, listen, this is Ms. Samples' first night. We don't want to act like that.
No, no, let's not be like that.
So I'll just be dramatic about it and say I have nothing to report.
I totally earned that. Thank you, Councilmember Green. So on the 27th, there is also the mayor's quarterly update. It's going to be at Venture X over at Castle Hills. The first one of these I did at Thrive. I'll be doing two more this year, and we'll be finding other locations throughout the city just to make it easy for folks. But this one will be starting at 7 o'clock this Thursday. We both have live and virtual options. With the virtual option, of course, you can catch it after the fact. So maybe you wander over to the library first and then pick up the video version in a day or two. But if you can, we'd love to have you make it out. It'll be a great overview of some of the projects that are going on in the city, opportunity to meet our city manager if you haven't had a chance, and keep going forward. So with that, I think we are going to move into, do we want to do workshop or closed session right now? Okay, we're going to go ahead and move into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, and Section 551.087, Economic Development Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. We're in closed session. We'll be back soon.
Claire, there's no action to be taken, right? There's no action to be taken on it. Yeah. All right, we're gonna call the session back to order and we're gonna... There is no action to be taken based on closed sessions, so we're gonna move right back into workshop. I think where we had put a pin in it was with Councilmember Green.
I think at the...towards the end of that, I was just rambling on, saying the same thing over and over again, so I think I'm done.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Any other comments from council?
I've got a couple of comments. I'll have to admit as well, I'm a little conflicted about this proposal as well. But after...anytime that happens with me, I've gotta go do some research, so... Couple of questions. What's the lifetime of a pool renovation? I know the first, I guess, iteration was 24 years, the second one, if we're at that point now, we're at 15 years, is that a valid assumption?
Yeah, so typically what you see is you get your first, you know, seven to 10 years, and then you have to start putting some significant money behind keeping the infrastructure alive, and, you know, you can tape a pool and keep it running for ever, it just depends on what the quality of pool experience you want, and how much you wanna keep putting in there. It really depends a lot on the pool.
And what's the lifetime of a splash park? I mean, if we do the splash park, when's the next time we really gotta consider a major renovation to something like that?
I mean, the one thing to think is that it is still an aquatic facility, right? So you're still running the chlorine through it, you're still dealing with a wet environment, but, you know, I would say 25% longer than you typically get out of your pool, 50% depending on, and the difference also is with the splash elements, it's a lot easier to go in there and adapt a new splash element to that park than it...to that point than it is with a pool itself.
Okay, so I'm just doing some numbers, so if you just look at this, if you look at this over a 10-year period, you know, you're gonna spend about 1.6 million with the splash park. If you're looking at this over...the pool over 10 million, over 10 years, you're gonna spend 3 million. Plus, that's not even counting probably another 3 to 6 million. If you wanted to update the park, you're probably...if it's 3 million in 2005, you're probably talking 6 million today's dollars to really redo that park.
That's a very good point.
I do think that, some of the comments I've seen, that I do think some more shade structure probably would be appropriate for this pool. I think, you know, if we stick with splash park, I think that's definitely something that needs to be looked at, I think. Also, I'm just kinda looking at different cities and different...what does other cities have? Okay, so just...I'm sure I've got some of these not completely accurate, but Carrollton's got...look at Carrollton, they're similar. They've got one pool, two splash parks. Denton has two indoor pools. Highland Village has one big splash park, kind of aquatic area. Flower Mound's got one indoor pool and water park, all kind of the same area. Grayfines, a little different model, a little different kind of thing, but they've got one indoor pool, one outdoor pool, two splash parks, and a water park. McKinney, McKinney Insulinaf, which is similar to us, has kind of one big complex with a bunch of different things. I do think that if you're looking...if we're looking for a feature to possibly make this a little more hybrid, you might wanna look at the McKinney, they've got what's called an outdoor kiddie pool, which is kind of a zero-to-one-foot depth. Maybe that's with a little kind of playground in the center, maybe that's something that could be... I'm advocating for that, I'm just saying that that's...looks like something that could be a in-between solution with everything we presented.
I think the park as it is currently has something similar to that around the play structure itself, right? It's a one-foot...
Yeah, we've got a zero-depth entry, or that one structure that I showed you that was under repair, that's a zero-depth entry to that point.
But that would still require a lifeguard, right?
Yes, yes.
So that's kind of my take on the thing, I think it's, you know... I certainly understand why somebody would want a pool in the area, but for one city to have three pools, it's... If you look at the surrounding areas, I don't know many of the cities that have three working pools with, you know... Especially with 30 lifeguards, that's, you know, that's a lot for one facility.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Councilmember Troy, you have anything to add?
Is it also true that if we did keep any type of a pool structure, we'd have to have the entire area enclosed?
Fenced, yes, sir.
So access to the restrooms and everything else would be...continue to be non-existent for the rest of the park?
Yes, sir.
So, I think, for me, I do understand the people who would like to have the park in the area, but just from a fiscal and just the problem...the problems of staffing and everything else, I mean... I would have to go with that, with the splash...with the splash park.
So your direction would be to go with a splash park, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
I think doing any kind of a pool structure would be...keeping any kind of pool structure would be cost prohibitive and personnel prohibitive, we probably wouldn't be able to keep it open.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Jones, I don't know if we've heard from you, if you have anything to add?
The only thing, because we've kind of been down this road for a little bit of time now, the pool versus the splash pad, I think the biggest problem with the pool is lately it's been having someone who could actually be in attendance to...as a lifeguard. We can't get lifeguards for the other two facilities, so it's not really a pool if it's not being used. And the concept that's given, I understand, and I can feel for the parents who want to have a place for their kids, but this does offer a place for the kids, it's just different than what they're used to. And I think, once it's installed, I think they will embrace it, it's different. It's still...the big things were safety and quiet and where families can...could be at, I think that's still there. The swimming element is a little different, and hopefully we get those folks to actually go to Thrive, and maybe we can get Thrive to have time for kids at certain timeframes so that they can teach their kids to swim. So I think there's...there are adjustments that can be made. At this point, I...my heart is with them with the pool, but the accountant in me always counts the dollars. And as we go forward, you know, maintaining that pool, I think, would be problematic and cost prohibitive for the city, whereas people are thinking about that right now, and by the time their kids are 10 or 11 and they're ready to go to Sun Valley to where the noise is, you know, it'll be a constant change, but I think this allows for parents with littles all over the city to attend this air...nice little quiet, because it is quiet, it's really cool, but you can't use it if we can't have a lifeguard in attendance.
All right, it sounds like we have...
I have something, I told you a slide, I'm gonna take that out since that has to go into a pool of water. Some kind of crossover to where they can, you know... Southlake has one.
Okay.
And it's a big crossover, or four years ago when I went there, they had a big crossover from... Well, we can, as I said, one of our things is, you know, the playground's gonna need to be replaced soon and have some upgrades,
so if we can't get into the splash pad, we can look into that element being...because we're really gonna make that connectivity between those two places, so we'll look into that, appreciate that.
So I do hear what sounds like consensus around going ahead and moving forward with the pad as proposed. I do believe that some of the other comments that came out of the conversations with residents, additional shade structures and additional seating to the existing...or to the upgraded facility need to be explored as well, and I don't disagree with that, I think that's... The renderings were great, but they were a little wide-open, spacey. There was one kid standing underneath an umbrella, I mean, with their phone, I was like, nah, they'd be sitting. So how do we do that, whether that's chairs?
Yeah, yes.
Something, yeah.
Furniture, we'll have pool furniture.
So, City Manager, do you need anything else?
That's all I needed, Mayor.
All right, so we have a next step on that one. Thank you so much, staff, for all of the outreach and making sure that we had good information to review. Next up, we have... Discussion for proposed plan for public property along I-35 impacts from I-35 Bridge.
Can we return to citizens' comments?
Oh, yes, and I did wanna do that one, sorry, thank you, City Secretary. My apologies, we did have a resident who...or not a resident, we did have a comment for a public session that came in. I would like to welcome up Mr. Lamar Woodham. If you please, sir, could state your name and address for the record, please, and you have five minutes.
First name's Lamar, last name's Woodham, W-O-O-D-H-A-M. Address is 2111 Clubside Drive, Corinth, Texas, 76210. This public statement is in correlation with the Louisville Lake Park Boat Rental Concession Air Program. It's 22-15Q. I was coming up here to make a statement saying that we would like to be considered as a vendor for the boat rental concession air program. The proposals that were submitted through Bonfire, we had a technical difficulty uploading it. We did hand-deliver a physical copy to the purchasing manager that has it on a USB stick in order to be able to review the proposal to be considered. Since the birth of the rental concession air program in 2018, we've currently been operating and doing business in the city of Louisville. Since then, up until now, when the proposal is being implemented, we've been in compliance with Parks and Rec and the local park rangers that operate there, and we are an established business in Louisville. And our primary website is jetskirentaldallas.com, and there's a lot of safety and safety plan, operational plan, cleanliness plan, the methodology of what we need to do is very strong with our company, and we have been operating with those requirements up until now and plan on proceeding in the future with that. So with that said, this is a formal request to be able to review our proposal just considering the circumstances of it having to be hand-delivered in physical form because of the technical difficulties with uploading it to the Bonfire platform, so...
Thank you, we'll have somebody from staff get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
City Secretary, thank you for the reminder on that. All right, and we are going to move into workshop session, item C, discussion of proposed plan for public property along I-35 and impacts from the I-35 Bridge project. City Engineer David Salmon is here to present that information. And I believe Miss Stacy Anaya also will be doing part of this later on, is that right?
Yes.
Outstanding, thank you, Vanna.
Mayor and council, while David's loading that up, I will remind you that he's gonna show you some text dot maps that staff has amended to make it easier to look. He'll be moving through the corridor, remind you that Phase 1 of I-35 is what's on the ground today, and that's been a six or eight-year process. Phase 2 acquisitions, we showed that several years ago, that will be in the future. What Dave's gonna show you is kind of a hybrid in between a Phase 1B, and of course, these are the bridge and over...the overpass designs. But again, to understand how these affect each property is really complex, and it's probably 70%, I would guess, straightforward, but that 30% is very complex and very complicated because there was Phase 2 acquisitions that were done in Phase 1. There was different deals on different tracks depending upon the impact, so everything wasn't fit into a nice shoebox of whatever happened at the time. So I think Dave's gonna start with that mindset and walk you through it, and again, there's some properties that are off the charts with regard to what text dot dealt with that owner at the time. So I think he's gonna walk you through, and then Stacy will come back through the corridor and talk about the parcels that are city property and opportunities there.
Good evening, the first thing I wanted to do, just for a point of reference, is bring up the schematics for the three bridges, so I'll give everybody a little bit of a reference of the scope of the project. of a reference of the scope of the project. I'm gonna start down at the, uh, Corporate Drive Bridge, uh, this, this bridge is, uh, gonna have the most work of all three interchanges, uh, it's, uh, basically flipping, uh, Corporate Drive will go underneath I-35, uh, I-35, uh, goes over the top, of course, uh, Corporate Drive will be widened to three lanes in each direction, uh, and we're getting rid of those jug handle, uh, ramps, uh, and they'll be, uh, normal ramps like you see at FM 407. And then next, we move northward to Business 121, um, there's not a whole lot changing here in terms of the configuration of the interchange, uh, 121 will still go underneath I-35, um, the number of lanes on Business 121 will remain the same, uh, the biggest difference here, uh, is that, uh, uh, that whole configuration with the flyover and the ramps, the kind of curl around will go away, uh, and again, this will just be a typical Tech dot interchange with the service routes come up adjacent to the, uh, uh, bridge, um, there still will be a connection to Texas Street, uh, you'll also notice on this section of the map, uh, that at some point, it'll probably, it may happen with this project, or it may lag a little bit, uh, Mill Street will be disconnected, uh, from Business 121 at its current location, uh, and a new connection will be made, uh, that'll line up with the Northwood Mobile Home Park entrance, uh, and it'll pull that signal back further away from the interstate. Uh, the, the third interchange, uh, moving again north, is our Main Street interchange, and just, uh, very quickly, um, you can see that the construction will start just north of Fox Avenue, uh, you see that, especially the northbound frontage road, it gets pulled quite a ways toward the east, um, as well as the main lanes. And then the construction ends as you get just to the north of College Street, um, of course, the Main Street Bridge will be widened, uh, have, uh, three lanes in each direction plus turn lanes, uh, so that kind of gives you a little bit of a reference point, uh, before I get into the parcels.
Dave, if you don't mind, would you tell, talk to them briefly about Edmunds Lane?
Oh, yeah, of course, um, it's not showing, uh, this is one of the early schematics, so it doesn't show that, um, but, uh, one of the things that happens with the Main Street Bridge is because of the widening, the interchange, the, the intersection with the southbound frontage road, uh, and Main Street gets even closer to Edmunds Lane than it already is, uh, and of course, it's already pretty, uh, hairy to drive through there, so, uh, Tech dot, uh, determined that it would be much safer to simply, uh, uh, put a median across that opening there at Edmunds Lane, so Edmunds Lane remains open to Main Street, but it's a right turn in and a right turn out only, uh, there's no left turn in or out, uh, from Edmunds Lane onto Main Street, uh, with this design, uh, and it's simply because the, the, the two intersections are almost touching each other.
The good news is the, that signal will go away, so all the signal times for green balls, or red balls, or, or yellow in-between, that signal timing will give, be given back to the intersection at 35 on west side and east side of the bridge, and that will increase and better our efficiency of that, of that corridor, uh, and avoid some of the longer backups you've seen by eliminating that light in that intersection, so that will be a better thing for traffic movement both north and south on the frontage roads, as well as east and west on 1171, be a big, big improvement.
We've been talking about that for years.
Yes, we have.
Yeah, I mean, that came up in the mid-'90s, and I think they wanted to burn us at the stake even discussing it.
Well, now it's Tech dot's decision.
That's right.
Yeah, and we can honestly say that Tech dot was the one that initiated that, uh, issue, uh, as we were going through these schematics.
Well, we want to honestly say that.
Yes.
Is there anything down by Frankfurt that they're gonna be doing?
Uh, with, with, with Fa- Phase 1 was the phase that was already completed, Phase 1B is just the three interchanges, um, so that's kind of what we're focusing on tonight with the right-of-way takes for Phase 1B, um, and of course, with the southernmost interchange being Corporate Drive, uh, the, the properties that are affected are, are basically just south of Corporate, and then move up to the other, north side of College.
So, to answer your question, that Tech dot has a project from LBJ to basically SRT, which would include Frankfurt, you said Frankfurt, correct?
Yeah.
So, that is, uh, the, there's two parts, but the, the main widening is beginning, but they're also adding between SRT and, uh, and.
Yeah, the, from what I understand, Tech dot's project will make, uh, from LBJ all the way to the Denton County line, uh, it'll be the ultimate configuration.
South line.
Very, um, curious, I don't know if they've been discussing this at all, Brandon, that section of it, um, on a public safety view, because that is the worst design in the history of Texas.
It's our consultant with ITS, they're, they're looking at the, the collector-distributor lanes between, um, Redbird and, and 121, that corridor where you have to come in and merge, and all that moving traffic in that short corridor, it's very dangerous, so they're looking at that now, but they're, they're encompassing that all the way from LBJ to the south side of the Denton County line.
And that's all fine and good, and I, and I'm glad they are, but that's not exactly what I'm talking about, I'm talking about our response time, I'm talking about police and fire, literally, when I was riding out on New Year's Eve, we had to go all the way into Carrollton southbound, go over, come back, get back on the highway, and you hope that you got the right information on what it is, because if you get in the main lanes and the wreck is on the other side of the wall, you have to repeat all that, and we're talking about minutes that can cause a life. So, if there was some gate that had a push-button access for our public safety, for our police, for our fire, that would literally open when there was an accident, so that we weren't hung up at red light in Carrollton going across 35 to come back up north, if you make one wrong decision, and you're having, you're literally having, there's no.
Yeah, you can't get there.
So, at, that interchange is absolutely deplorable on a public safety standpoint.
We'll look into it.
Okay.
So, the map I've pulled up now is, uh, the first of four, uh, right-of-way strip maps, uh, that, uh, we've got, um, we started, the basis for these maps were some maps that we made back in the, uh, probably 2008 timeframe, uh, that showed Phase 1 and Phase 2 parcels, uh, and whether they were full takes or partial takes, um, of course, back in the, at that time, uh, you know, we just expected there was gonna be a Phase 1 and a Phase 2, nobody ever anticipated at that point that there was gonna be a Phase 1B, so, um, what we did is we modified those original maps from 2008, uh, and we differentiated between, uh, Phase 1, uh, Phase 1B, and, uh, Phase 2, so the colors get a little bit complicated, so let me kind of, uh, give you a brief, uh, description of what the different colors and, and lines mean, um, you'll notice, uh, where my pointer is pointing, you'll see a green line, um, these are, uh, that's the proposed right-of-way line, um, if you see a parcel that looks pink or purple, uh, that is a partial take, if you see a parcel like this one over here where my pointer is, it's yellow, uh, or if there's kind of teal-colored green, those are, uh, uh, full takes, and, uh, you'll notice the two parcels, I've got my pointer on, um, I guess the scale might be a little bit small, but they've got a kind of a hash mark look to them, you'll see some par- uh, you may see some parcels further up that are more solid colored, um, if they've got hash marks on them, it means they were Phase 2, or they were originally Phase 2, so, and I'll explain that better as we go through.
Okay.
So, we're starting down at Hebron, um, and, uh, you know, this is down where the Tilted Kilt was, and, uh, uh, I think there's a shopping center that's been torn down, um, anyway, uh, tho- those, these, these two parcels here were really, uh, a part of Phase 2, although, um, they did go ahead and they did purchase, uh, that right-of-way, even though it was Phase 2. Tech dot did, uh, when they were buying Phase 1 right-of-way, there were some, uh, parcel owners that were interested in selling at that time, even though they were Phase 2, so they did go ahead and purchase some Phase 2 parcels during Phase 1. We get up closer to Corporate Drive, and again, you see all the pink, and those are partial takes, uh, uh, including, uh, Brook Hollow, uh, we've got the, uh, the La Quinta was a full take, uh, then we've got a couple of parcel, partial takes over, uh, adjacent to Corporate Drive, uh, you can see where the green right-of-way line is, uh, and again, these are partial takes, uh, and in these cases, uh, the state, uh, will, will simply just take, uh, what they need, uh, and, and on these three parcels here, uh, just south of Corporate, um, it doesn't affect the buildings, so this is, this truly is a partial take.
Dave used the La Quinta for take and give back on a full.
Well, yeah, that's what I was kind of gonna get into with Brook Hollow, Brook Hollow was a partial take, uh, but it was sort of a special deal, and they ended up paying the property owner for the entire parcel, including the building, and, and the money to tear the building down, uh, and, and for whatever reason, uh, the owner's ended up keeping the building, even though he was paid for it, uh, and, uh, so he's, he's going to. Basically, they'll lose a bunch of their parking in front, and they'll have to figure out a way to make it work once that parking goes away, but that, that's one of the things that, uh, uh, Mr. Ferris was mentioning earlier, is that there's some real one-off, uh, incidences with regard to these right-of-way takes, um, some of the parcels, uh, and we don't have an example on this map, but some of the parcels, uh, they show a, uh, they show a full take, and they pay them for the entire property, but then they turn around and give back the, the part that they don't need, and sometimes that includes the building, and we'll see that a little bit further north. You can see now we're getting into, uh, the, 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 the pink was an original, uh, th- those were original parcels, uh, from, from Phase 1, uh, when you see the darker purple, these are getting into the 1B parcels. Now, we're getting up into the area where the old, uh, Studio Movie Grill used to be, um, there were some restaurants in here, um, Hoffine's Chevrolet, uh, on the other side, you've got some of the other auto dealers, um, again, all this purple was partial takes, uh, and, uh, uh, I think for the most part, these are all ones where, uh, they're, they literally are partial takes, uh, they're far enough away from the building, uh, and so they're not, uh, you know, they're not having to get into those building issues, uh, so the, these will be simple partial takes, um, here's a couple of the auto dealerships are, are partial takes, but they took them in Phase, uh, 1, uh, because at that time the owners were willing to sell, so that's why those are showing up as pink rather than the dark purple, um, if you drive out there today, uh, you'll notice that a lot of this pavement has been removed, and then, uh, auto dealers, uh, of course, were paid for that, and, and they were able to, uh, restructure their parking and display areas. We've got a, uh, if you see an orange parcel, those are parcels that Tech dot, for whatever reason, acquired even before Phase 1, um, so they've had those for a long time, uh, you'll notice that here's a yellow parcel, and it's green in the back, this was a full take, I think this was the, uh, uh, cattle restaurant, and, um, so basically on something like this where it's a full take, the, uh, Tech dot bought the entire parcel, uh, this time the owner did tear the building down, uh, but he got to keep the property that Tech dot did not need, so it was deeded back to him.
And that's the property we're buying for the park?
Yeah, that's the Triangle Park.
Yeah, I think so, that's, well, is that right next to the Triangle Park?
Yeah.
It's right next, well, this is the property, it's right next to the Triangle.
Yeah, the Triangle Park property is up in here.
Yes, then it is, sorry, I couldn't see our property.
And of course, Stacy will cover a lot of those issues with her part of the presentation. As we move further north, uh, we get into, uh, we're getting closer to Business 121, uh, you can see the areas, uh, where the old hotels were torn down, um, and again, those were, uh, full takes, uh, the owners were paid to tear down the buildings, uh, they ultimately did, uh, but of course, uh, they ended up getting the, the bulk of the property back, uh, after the, the take was finished, um, same thing with, uh, this is the, my pointer is pointing at, uh, uh, Northern Tool, and, uh, that was a full take as well, it's, it's that teal-colored green, um, this is another ca- this is a case where Tech dot really only needed the frontage, but it took all of their display pa- spaces and a lot of their parking, and so, uh, uh, it was a, it was a full take, they got paid for everything, but they got to, ended up getting to keep the bulk of the property and the, the building, I think the building, a little portion of the front of the building had to be removed, uh, but they're refacing that now, um, and so for the most part, the building is still whole, and they'll have to kind of figure out their parking, uh, moving forward, uh, but this is one of those unusual situations where it was a full take, but yet the building still didn't go away, and the owner still owns it. Same thing happened with the old, uh, what, what used to be, uh, Smith Farm and Garden, um, same thing there, the building's still, it was a full take, uh, the building is still there, the owner still owns it, uh, I think they, uh, removed a small portion on the front of the building, uh, and they're gonna have to reface it. Uh, we've got some partial takes, uh, down here on the, uh, the east side, and, and these are all just simple partial takes, there's nothing unusual about them. We've got the old Waffle House, that was a full take, uh, and then that one is, the whole, the whole property really was taken, they needed for right-of-way, as well as, I think there used to be an old gas station here on the corner, which was a full take. As we move further north, um, again, we had a, a, a full take, um, we had full takes along the frontage, along the west side of I-35, uh, some of these parcels were purchased long before even Phase 1, um, got a couple of Phase 1B properties up here on Business 121, um, oddly enough, and I'm not quite sure what happened here, but the, the, my pointer is pointing at a parcel that was originally identified as a Phase 1 property, but for some reason they didn't acquire it till Phase 1B, um, and that takes, uh, we're just about to get into the houses, uh, in, in Lakeland Terrace, so.
Bit of history while he's pulling that up, so a lot of the homeowners on Lakeland and. So a lot of the homeowners on Lakeland and Harbor on the east side were hearing about these early acquisitions of Tech Dot. And they didn't know what was happening and whatnot, so Tech Dot did meet with them. And what Dave's gonna show you is that, irregardless, most of these were phase two. Tech Dot made one offer upfront to the homeowners and said, here's where we are, it's phase two, but we're gonna go ahead and make you a great offer. If you hesitate, then we'll see you at phase two, but Dave's gonna show you how that worked out.
Right, and here you see the row of homes that used to face Lakeland. I think it's Lakeland. And none of these homes are here today, all of them have been torn down. Again, these were identified as phase two properties. And Tech Dot doesn't even really need them for phase 1B as well, but again, because of the uncertainty, I mean, homeowners, you know, kind of sitting in limbo. Tech Dot did go out and purchase these properties during phase one, although they didn't really need them at the time. They were full takes, the houses have been torn down, and I think this is some of the property that Stacy will be talking about with her part of the presentation. A similar situation on the other side of I-35, over, I think it's Harbor Drive. Again, all these properties were full takes, there's still a couple of these houses that are occupied. And from what I can tell, this property has already been purchased. So I have to assume at this point that the state made some sort of an arrangement with the property owners to occupy those homes until absolutely necessary to move out. But these have all been purchased, and they're all full takes, and eventually, all those houses will be gone. Of course, we're moving up toward Fox Avenue, and you all remember, there was a construction yard here at the northeast corner. And of course, that was a phase one, and that's been long gone. There's still some property there left that the owner owns. A lot of this stuff on the south side of Fox Avenue, on, on the south, I guess it would be the southeast quadrant, they're identified as full takes, but they have not been taken yet. Those businesses, I think there's an office building, Brahms, and a gas station. They're still all, from what I can tell, they're, they're still there and operating. And Tech Dot doesn't need these properties right now, so these will continue to be a phase two take. As we get further, closer to Purnell Street, we've got some homes that were taken in phase, they were, they were, they're, they're full takes, but they were purchased in phase one, even though they show as phase two. We've got a couple of teal-green ones that were just recently purchased for phase 1B, and again, those are full takes. And then, of course, we had a couple of partial takes, some homes that just lost some small corners. We get up closer to Main Street, where the hospital is, and again, this was all, this property was all full take. And everything has been removed that was there. Of course, the hospital did get to keep the property back behind the, the right-of-way line, even though it was a full take. Now we're at Main Street. We've got partial takes up here on the southwest quadrant. And the purple parcel, of course, is the bank, and that, that, that is a partial take. Straightforward partial take. The gas station here on the corner is, is a partial take. The building, I believe, will probably be demolished eventually, but the owner will keep the property. And then, of course, we've got some partial takes on the west side of 35. And then, of course, once you get north of College Street, most of this stuff is phase two. If you look at the east side of I-35, you know, we've got the, what used to be the IHOP. Surprisingly, it's a partial take, even though almost all the parking is going to be taken with the 1B project. But the building was, is untouched, so that'll kind of be interesting to see how that one moves forward with limited parking in an existing building. Just to the north of that, we had, I guess that was the Taco Bueno. Of course, that was recently torn down, that was a full take. Again, the, the owner was paid for the entire property, plus the building, the building was removed. The owner will, will keep the bulk of the property outside of the right-of-way. Of course, we've got our water tower property, and then the hotel just south of that, those are true partial takes. Interestingly enough, the Andromeda's Tax Service at the corner of College and then the Service Road, it's a full take. And it says it was originally a phase two, but from what I can tell, Tech Dot has already purchased the right-of-way. So, again, I'm gonna have to assume here that at some point, the building that Andromeda's is located in is either gonna be vacated or torn down. But I don't know, I don't have the answer to that. But it appears that has already been purchased. And then again, we've got a couple of partial takes with some of the houses just to the north of Andromeda's. So with that, I'll take any questions, and if you have any about any specific properties or the Tech Dot process. I think this was the last map, moving north, everything north of this point is, is phase one or phase two.
My apologies, this big yellow, which is the, I think it's the U-Haul, right? 124, 125?
Yeah.
Is, is that a phase one taking?
Phase two, full take.
It shows a phase two.
Phase two?
And I'm not certain whether they've acquired that yet.
But that's a full take?
Yeah, but they're full takes, because they take so much of the building now. You know, the question's going to be...
Yeah, I just don't see that little right-of-way line, that's what, that's what this guy got me confused.
Yeah, so the, the proposed right-of-way is somewhere back in here.
Wow, okay.
So you can see the proposed right-of-way line does cut through the, the building. So this is gonna be another one of those situations where I guess we'll have to figure out, you know, once these people have been paid for the property and the buildings, what are they gonna do with the buildings? Can they make the, can they make what's remaining of the building still work to do something else? Or are they gonna tear them down completely? We don't know.
Thank you.
I have one question about, just not so much about the property takes, but the entrances, like Hebron, how it's close to that, to the, I guess we come off Hebron on a circle, and you, and you have to immediately get over, are they gonna reconfigure like the entrance and exit lanes?
I think they will with phase two, that will not happen with the 1B interchanges.
And, and the last thing would be with, with that right turn-only lane with no light? I think that's gonna be a heavily big-time accident over there, because people trying to, I watch people turn with the light. But they're, they're trying to get over to go northbound on I-35. So I'm, I think that's something we'll have to work with Tech Dot to reconfigure that, because that's gonna be still remain a problem, just a different problem. That's all I have, thank you.
I had a question about one of the maps you sent us, that you haven't seen you present tonight. It was, Louisville I-35 Preferred Scenario 1320 to 2022, do you have that map?
That's, that's coming under Stacy.
Yeah, I think Stacy's got another piece of this presentation.
So really, Council Mayor, the, the intent was for Dave to show you kind of what's going on on the ground, and so you can see the impacts. And then what Stacy is needing is she's gonna be moving forward with her healthy infrastructure plan. She's gonna present a proposed I-35 public property plan for all of the parcels. She's gonna start, I think, from the north going south, that the city currently owns, and how we can best utilize them and get input from you guys, before we take that plan back to you for approval, and we use that under the healthy infrastructure plan for input there.
Julie? I know these maps were too big to go in our packet, and they're, they were not placed in Granicus, I don't believe.
They weren't, they shouldn't have been in there.
I'm sorry?
They were in Granicus, they were linked in there, but they weren't very big.
Yeah, is there an opportunity for us to, to get these PDFs that were displayed to us tonight?
Absolutely, we'll get those to you.
Love that, thank you.
I know what you're thinking, did I coordinate my outfit to David's maps? And the answer is yes. All right, so I think these are the maps, Councilman Meredith, you were talking about. And this ta- this goes a little bit further north, and what we did is we worked with Kimley Horn to assess what the takes would be, and what would be remaining of the parcels, and how much it would impact, you know, buildings, and would there be capacity for us to look at developing any of the parcels? And so I'm gonna work north to south and talk a little bit about what some of the recommendations that, when we worked with Kimley Horn to look at this, we might consider as we move forward with a healthy infrastructure plan. So at the top, you'll see just at the, that's the intersection of Garden Ridge and I-35. And you'll see that with, a, a park has already been created there as part of the, the mitigation there. So we have Highlands Lake Park, we have a nice green area that comes up, and then the rest of the area's been developed. And just, just a little bit south of that, we've got a couple of parcels at the end of a cul-de-sac that are gonna remain there. And those, what, some of the recommendations that we'll go through is, well, what do we do with these remaining parcels? They just go back to the, the current owner, there's nothing that can be done with them, is there any way for the city? Is the city gonna own them? How do, what are opportunities for us to develop, even if, you know, we don't own them right now? And so these small pieces are, we suggest that even though the city owns them, is that we might sell them to the adjacent owners. It's the end of the cul-de-sac, I think the residents probably interested in that. It doesn't make sense for us to develop even a pocket park there in terms of our 10-minute walk to a park, though it's so small. So those are some of the recommendations we would look at.
While, while you're there, there's a, there's a house there, it's in, it's kind of in that peach-colored, what does that, what does that mean there?
This one on Bogard.
Right under your pointer.
Oh.
Yeah, right there, what's, what does that, what does that mean?
A neighborhood gateway, so one of the i- items might be, is, you know, we have, we have district gateways, like we have the big L with the bird, the purple, purple marten, sorry, coming out that we have at our major, major gateways, is that we might have places that are neighborhoods, distinct neighborhoods, that might merit a similar, smaller gateway that we come, we come up with.
There's a house currently there, is that house staying?
It will be impacted a little bit, I can find out more specifically.
That house has been impacted by everything.
Yeah, like...
Cars.
Right, and there's not much for us to look at on our side, till we get a little bit further south, and we come to the intersection of Valley Ridge and I-35, which we will be actually kicking off our NTP for construction there on the Green Ribbon Project tomorrow, actually. So we're gonna see some movement on creating a plant and tree palette there that will be reminiscent of what you see in Leela. So we've got that going on, I'm gonna jump to the next one, 'cause this is where they overlap. So, at this point, we've got some of the parcels that were, kind of David ended his, his, his conversation, is where we've got some intersection with the Prairie Creek, Valley Ridge, Green Belt, where we already own a piece of property on the east side of, of I-35, just north of Milliken. And depending on what that intersection with the creek and I-35 looks like, is what, what should we do with that kind of really neat area, where creek comes out and you see those rocks, is that, is it, is an opportunity to amenitize it, create a connectivity with the trail system? We're really hoping that when we go through our healthy infrastructure plan, that we're looking at, at really developing that Prairie Creek to the east of I-35 in terms of a trail system, and, and the like, and what opportunities do we have there? And, you know, I think we're, we're gonna have, you know, some conversations. Part of the reasons that it's sitting with the city right now is that we probably can't have a lot of access from I-35 onto that piece of property. Like, we're not gonna be able to have people turn right onto that piece of property. So we're gonna have to look at it from a neighborhood aspect, really a pedestrian and bicycle stuff. And then on number two, the, where the number two is, that's where the, the water tower is right now. We have an opportunity that maybe we could do some reforestation, take a little bit of that palette we're doing with the green centerpiece to kind of make, you know, also maybe overlay that with a, a neighborhood entry point, and really kind of beef that up a little bit. We know what the district gateway is gonna look at Main Street, really excited about that. And then as we move further south, those houses that are close to Purnell that are being taken, those might also be an opportunity for us to look at either some small green spaces, some reforestation, help with that sound control in that area, and really connect people. You know, this is where you're looking at, you know, the southern end of the pecan groves that used to be here, and what we're looking at. So is that an opportunity to maybe, you know, reestablish some of those there?
What about community gardens?
We might actually be able to look at that with a sustainability plan, that's something that, that we're looking at. We also would be trying to identify someone in the neighborhood who could help, help us do that. So I think there's some really great opportunities, because what you would see there is probably close to a food desert.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
The other parts on four and five, both of these areas are, are close to 10-minute walk to a park deserts. And you'll say, well, why, why is that? 'Cause I can see, you know, Alvin Turner, Sycamore Park, formerly Sycamore Parks there. We know that, that we have Central Park, and it just, and then with number five off of Lakeland, we've got Ralden. But just remember, there's a creek that's in between there, so number five is a 10-minute walk to a park desert. And we don't quite know how much property will be left, but we do know that there are oper- opportunities for reforestation, maybe a linear park there that we could put some elements, so we're pretty excited about that. As we move down to that next section, you'll see there's a green part just underneath the gateway, and I think that really is gonna be plainly for reforestation, that's a pretty small parcel. But, you know, if there's an adequate place to plant a tree, I think we should plant a tree. We take a lot down, and I think it's an opportunity to put a lot up.
Yeah, I, I, I look to McKinney and what they're doing with, like, any square foot that they can put a crepe myrtle. I'm not saying crepe myrtles are what we want, but any square foot that they can put one of those mid-sized trees, they put it there.
Right, and so we're looking at that, and we've been working with David and his team on what the, the planting plan's gonna be like at those three intersections, and then how does that, you know, come back out off of that? So we're pretty excited about that. Number six is the Future Park in the, in the neighborhood, in the Triangle neighborhood. And what will be remnants at that new corporate intersection might give us an opportunity to do another Green Ribbon Project. There's a whole bunch of big trees in those jug handles right now, and you may see me tied to one before construction, don't worry, I won't. But what, you know, we're gonna try to make sure that, that we can keep those or replicate what's been in there before. And one of the things that we did with Kimley Horn is we looked at what the soil compilation up and down I-35 is, and what elements of either cross timbers or blackland prairie should be put in each one of these. And so we've got some ideas about what type of plant material will thrive most here. And that's really basically all I've got on our side in terms of park development. And that's really basically all I've got on our side in terms of park development. We might have some opportunities for some smaller district or neighborhood gateways to say, welcome, you're here. But these are some opportunities we have that we'd like to get in front of you and maybe bring back so that we can integrate it as we start our healthy infrastructure plans, because some of these will be key components of boosting the urban tree canopy, but also solving some of the 10-minute walk to a park gaps that we have.
Are you looking for any particular direction from Council, or just that we like it?
Yeah, I think we're just trying to see if you're in general consensus that we're headed the right direction, and we're going to then put this out, basically envelop, or we're going to roll this into our healthy infrastructure plan and get input from the public on that as well. Is there any other?
Yeah, I think that's right, and what we'll do is we'll just adopt it when we adopt the healthy infrastructure plan, if y'all are cool with it.
Council?
A hundred percent. I look at the land over there in between Fox and, before we get to, oh, I'm sorry, thank you. I look at the land over there where their houses used to be, I think that would be a cool little linear park, you know, or maybe get feedback from, from those people in the neighborhood and see if they want something a little different, and we can kind of agree. I think that'd be a cool, cool thing.
Other comments? I like it, I want it, let's have it, I yield.
Tomorrow. No pressure.
All right, City Manager, do we have anything else to cover?
Yes, sir.
All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Council, please vote.
Where did we vote?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned. And that is eight.